It's all long. Look like a man. I didn't get around today, but I'm on that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think he's talking.
You're not. Thank you. Thank you. I can't survive this one. Yeah. Feel it tomorrow.
Can I just... Can I have a copy of this?
You've got the wrong one. What, your name? June.
Oh.
Does it have a name?
No, no, no.
Yeah, it's just, um, obviously Kim's not been in the house.
It's all right now.
Oh, thank you.
Cheers, sir. Make me a glass of water.
Cheers, sir. Thank you, John. I'm afraid, can I just follow up with it first? Obviously, it says, "Please, walk my attention, the wrong..." So, Kim's not been in, and he said, "I can't sort it yet." So, please bear with us.
Who's me? I don't know who's me.
I'd say, if I can't do it, I'll do it.
It's easy, isn't it? It's not worth it.
Well, like I say, we can only do what we can, can't we?
It's about, you know, sit there and wait for the nervous.
Thank you, Jose.
Well, you go, okay. Yes, I wasn't aware. In all this, I...
I am.
You were, weren't you? I was, my dear. I must have missed that.
Thank you.
I wasn't aware. Oh, it's all right.
All right, thanks. It's very warm. And then, um, please, come.
Yes. Hi. You're all right till you come here.
It's me, yeah.
How you doing?
Hello.
I'm all right still. I'm good, mate.
Shall we lock you out?
Good work. When I finish cracking, I'll be fine.
Hey, John, didn't you ask for that job?
No.
See what I mean?
No, there is.
Well, we got a lot of people that made one. All right. I'll talk to you afterwards. Oh.
You've got some name, can you look at it? Samme, Samme. I did apologize.
Lots of ink on it. Should have took a load, mate. It sounded pretty good.
I think the mayor could take his jacket off. Yes, anything, we could, we'd like to take packets and so on.
Sorry, I need you to know, because you're going to lose your coffee. Uh, okay.
You know, I thought you told me you used to run the...
We'll continue it.
I was going to...
Just before we start the meeting, it's a new town park, a new brush sweep to clean, and also, these ladies have got a work-life balance to do. So, we used to hang around quite a lot after the meeting, didn't we? But if we can get hot drinks prior to the meeting, and then, so they can wash up on time.
Mr. Mayor, you're the one that keeps everyone up.
Yeah, I apologize for that. That was...
I don't want you to...
So, if you'd be like a hot drink now, would it be...
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't try and say stuff, and I just had too much.
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
That is... Should have been between five hundred and fifty minutes.
See, it was beginning.
Okay, can we start with any apologies perhaps?
No, no, absolutely. Don't we do anything like this?
Yes.
And that should be fine. Obviously, we're supposed to be helping.
Um, I've got a columnist named Jamboree, Brian Hall, Anthony Christian, Joanne Reynolds, Tannen's coming, which goes into the lead, and Pollan, who maybe she's meant to be...
She brings all chips.
She didn't say.
And then, number two, declarations of interest, as usual, we start with Knox County Council. Knox Borough, Borough Council. Also, Mr. Mayor, I've got a firm check after twelve, my bar is adequate prudence. And that's something that I won't act it, but I think I'll need to change my...
Okay, then, that was good actually.
No problems or apologies come up here. Um, and then, finally, a lot. No, yes, sorry. Sorry. All right, yeah, um, so, do the minutes, and then, as a three A, don't forget in mind, we'll ask Ken to address us early, so he can get away on the matter of town planning. Is that all right?
I wouldn't address that many.
So, for the minutes of the town council held last time, the twenty-second of June. Uh, have you read through? And will you... Any corrections? I'll sort this, approve the minutes, and I hope also people should all wish they'd present after birthdays as well. We have, I do.
Oh, uh...
Why, why was this a man? It was mine and it...
Yes, it is.
We could do this, but...
All right, so, first of the minutes, who's going to be through it? Councilman Craig.
Okay, then, and that's over, go to, um, Ken, thank you very much. I'll leave it to Mike. All right, so, can I come forward?
Yeah.
Please, sir.
Can I come? Uh, you should have had a progress report, but, um, I'll just quickly go through it. Um, I hope I've got the thing. Basically, we are ready to go out to formal consultations for six weeks, which is to people like the county council, the borough council formally, the environment agency, heritage England, all the statutory bodies. There's a list that we can, we have to set in the plan, too. The plan has to be right before we do that, and I now think it is more or less right, um, subject to two details. One is, the plan doesn't quite fit with the map, in that, in the centre of the map, there's a red area, which we've used as the housing site, Cemetery Lane.
Cemetery Road.
It's the east of Cemetery Lane, I don't think that's what you normally call it.
Cemetery Road.
Cemetery Road, sorry. And, and that's not mentioned in the plan itself. So, the two things have got to fit together. So, what I suggest is, you take it off the map. It's a committed site, isn't it?
Yes, it's already on the map.
Yeah.
No, it's not, it takes five hours.
Well...
But it has been commissioned gradually twice.
I think the simplest thing is to take it off the map.
No, because it was in the course strategy on Wednesday, so it hasn't been taken out of the map. It hasn't. Well, that's unbothered, I didn't want taking out the map on Wednesday.
Can I just, do I next, lady? Are we on about, um, Montshaw here?
Yes, Montshaw.
Apparently, the day that the planning permission was supposed to run out, is it three years or something, they kind of put some foundations down, so it saved it, so it's not run out. They haven't stopped building on there as such, but they put, their class has put some foundations down, so it kept them, the permission carries on down.
No, no. I was being asked, we can't do that. Yes, we can't.
They have them.
They have to continue. They have to do whatever they think they want.
Yeah, should, should, finish the run track. I mean, I think you need to make a decision one way or the other. Either we add a line to the neighbourhood plan, saying, "Housing site at some, so, with a capacity of so many dwellings," which I can do, and we amend the neighbourhood plan to do that, or we take it off the map. But the two have got to fit together. The second point, um, is, and this is a really important series, is Field Farm, and I had always assumed that all of Field Farm, the housing site of four hundred and fifty dwellings, was in the town council area, and it isn't. So, the top north-east corner, I think, is in Tralal.
That's the bottom bit. Of like the roundway, right?
Yeah.
No, it's not.
It's not in Stapleford, that's for sure.
All those boundary groups.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a boundary problem.
No, it's not. Um, well... If you start, I'm sure it's.
No, I, I double-checked it. Our own plan shows a boundary for the town council that cuts out that north-east area. So, what I have done, I have amended the map, and for that north-east corner, and also for, um, the south-west corner, which is coloured blue, and I've suggested that it be planted with willow trees and trees that like, um, wet conditions. I have added to that informal recommendation, because that's all you can do. So, during the consultation, we've sorted out with Tralal, and say, "Are you in agreement with this?" If Tralal say, "Yes, we are," then we're fine. We'll sort out the suitable form of words.
Tralal would never discuss it, I tell you.
No, no, but they'll get sent the plan anyway, as formal consultation.
I'll double-check it, I'll be worried about it as well.
Okay, right. And the third point is, we've designated a number of local green spaces in the plan, and that's perfectly good, and that's perfectly correct. Um, however, the recommendation is that you should do your best to notify the owners. Now, a number of them are farmers, and I can do my best from Google Maps to get, um, a postcard, and we will send them a letter. But, um, because of what we're saying in the neighbourhood plan, I expect someone in Brockstone Council to be told to go through this with a fine toothpick, and try and find something to hold with it.
Of course.
So, the way to cover this is to put an advertisement in a newspaper with a map of the designated green spaces, saying, "We'll lend our best to notify owners, but anyone who owns one of these green spaces and wants more information, contact the town park," blah, 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 there, and then we cover it. Do you see what I mean? But I think, I looked up Evening Post, I, Evening Post and the local paper, maybe sixty people would cover it for two nights.
Well, fine, then.
Uh, that would be my recommendation.
So, it'll say to you, my friend.
Yes, it does.
It'll say to you. Yeah.
I think, probably need to put it on the town council website, and I'm more than happy to put it on my website.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a small way to get an information out, isn't it? Do you know what I mean? I hope George is used to that.
And then, finally, um, at the neighbourhood plan committee, or advisory committee?
This is the one.
There it is. Steerium. I produced a programme that had us adopting the neighbourhood plan in April, I think it was, in this, in the, um, progress report that I, that should have been sent around. I think we could do it in March, possibly February. Could certainly go up to the referendum in February. Um, however, there's this further period because of elections.
Yeah.
Now, I would doubt that that extends to February myself.
Six weeks before the election.
And they're in April, I think.
And then, second back.
Not really, well, you covered that, I think, with the best...
April, two weeks.
April, nine to May. With a fair wing, we could go up to the referendum in February, and if, if referendum can be processed fairly quickly, if you say, "Yes or no," when all the people are voted, we'd have to get people, not ourselves, to do the count, and that, that can all be sorted out. So, I think you could have an adopted plan, um, five months later next year. By the time we've been out to consultation, and Brockstone have done their consultation, could do that by the end of November, it's got a fair amount of weight. Do you see what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
And what we have to keep an eye on is how Brockstone are doing with their local plan. And I think we'll beat them, uh, in terms of deadline. Um, final thing is, Stephen Saunders of Brockstone has sent some comments on, on the neighbourhood plan, which I've replied to. What he said is, I think we've only allocated, uh, Saks for fifty dwellings, over and above Field Farm. So, he has said in his email, and he surprises me, because I thought he was an intelligent man, um, that this amounts to only five dwellings a year in the neighbourhood plan. But there's no basis for ignoring Field Farm. It's allocated, people are going to build houses on it, most of it is in Stapleford. So, I've replied to him and said, "Would you agree that forty-five a year is a more realistic estimate, taking account of Field Farm? Or, can you quote me a precedent where a neighbourhood plan has not counted commitments from the course strategy? Why would you not?" Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
So, basically, ladies and gentlemen, that, that, I think, is where we are. I think the decision that you've got to make is on this Cemetery Road site. I've got no strong, I don't know this site very well, I'm sure it's a decent housing site. I think we don't want a, uh, the map saying one thing, and the writing saying another. So, either both say, "Yes, it's an housing site," or both say, "We've got no comment on it."
Okay, we have to comment on it.
What does it go around the council, please?
I would suggest that it's not really fit for anything else other than housing, and if it's rotation, I would suggest that really it needs a process. So, and a further figure that goes to our sort of...
So, Stephen, oh, now, says seven and a half a year.
Yes, but I would definitely agree with him.
Uh, so, the council, Chris, go ahead.
Well, we've been told that this information has been sent out from Stephen only yesterday, and, and I, I might be wrong, because I'm going to be coming on, I don't think everybody around this table is aware of what that information is, and I'm probably right in saying that. Some people might have seen it, some haven't, and I imagine that the members of the steering group, which is made up of residents, councils, and businessmen, are probably not seeing it neither. And I think with that much information, the neighbourhood plan, it's probably the most important thing we've done this administration, do you know what I mean? And it, and probably this town council has done ever, it is, we've got to get it right. And I know people have worked hard, you know, there's a lady saying, "The public gallery, David," loads of people have put a lot of work into it, and we don't want to get it wrong. So, what I, and I think we should do is defer this item, and then have a meeting, I don't know, organise it on Monday or something, when you've got your dialogue out, and then come back in a week or two, give us a chance to go away and tap in this information, especially with what, um, what Ken just said to us, because we want to get it right, we want to get it right, because when the residents vote on it, we want them to say yes to it, we don't want them to say no. So, if, if we kind of defer this for a couple of weeks, and that part of it is special meeting, not everyone got it, it gives us time to go away, get it right. I know it's a small audience, and I know everyone might not be able to turn, but I'm sure we'll get a lot of people here. We can send it out to the, um, the steering group, you know, Simon, and everybody have their stamp, and then come back and, and get on with it, because we do need to get on with it, but we also need to get it right.
Okay, so, do you have that as a promise?
Yes, we have.
And anybody who was saying?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say, I, I wish to second that, for simplicity, but it is important. Um, like I say, I got that, you know, from seven o'clock last night. So, and then, I thought, actually, we were waiting for the meeting, and time, you know, probably you said, and obviously, your, your replies, and saying, "Yes," I think that's a good idea, so, which is closing that light, it's a good idea.
And then, will you take the votes on that? Then, would you just have that pass? Vote, vote, vote for that person, then, then, we'll do it, if you want to speak.
I'll let the council speak first before you vote on it.
Vote at the end, and then the council draft is next. And then, give yourself time.
Ken, I've had to scrap it repeatedly as well. Ken, so I don't know, I've asked him repeatedly, are we counting the, the number of flats or apartments, as we, as our planning department call them, are they in the figure? Because I, I objected to a planning application in Stapleford anyway, and pointed out between X and Y, right, which, you know, I, I do roughly know Stapleford, between X and Y, there were sixty-four flats stroke apartments. Now, I've been going on about this for a long time, and he still has never gave me whether it's in the figure or not, I've got a clue.
We can give an answer, that, because we have to directly ask Mike.
Did you?
Uh, council, next, and then, that's all, so.
Thank you. I'm hoping that, uh, can I mention the course track on this issue? Course track's been out for what, about sixteen years, something like that?
Oh, no, less than that.
Better, that's about ten, twelve.
No, no.
I first saw it...
Two thousand and fourteen, I think.
No, I saw it before that.
Ah, a draft, and it was adopted in two thousand and... Might have been two thousand and twelve, but not that long ago.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what I saw, saw it in the leaders' room of Fosse, I remember, Mark Rich was leader, asked for a couple of questions, never got the answers, and first, it's been out terrific, after the local plan, I've only kept a watching brief on it, so I don't like it. I think it's all wrong. It's not supposed to be like this, it's lost to come.
Yeah. Thank you. Council Hall.
Yes, I understand. Um, yeah, it's a topic question. Um, I am concerned about the time, if we do, I'm going to have a sort of special meeting. Um, really, I'll ask Ken what sort of term he thinks we need to get through this, so we can come back to it. He doesn't need to come to the meeting, I think, because of the same.
No, I mean, I would...
But I, I, I think, it's, it's all right saying that we set a, that we have an emergency meeting to look at it, I'm concerned, emergency meetings, yeah, it's the whole of the summer period, uh, dread to think if it ends up the core, that we must press on with it, I mean, you know, so we should set a definite, within a certain time, too.
The next council, who, who, who... Oh, this council, Hall, then, of course.
So, yeah, I mean, I'd say, Stephen sat there with us last night after the meeting, and we did actually ask the question, you know, how we gave us a figure for Stapleford, you know? Yeah.
There isn't.
Still, never got an answer to it, never. And I said to him, says, "You're building all these houses, flats, apartments, whatever, yet you still want to give us a figure, so you want on Bob's, so it's what, how can we know what you want to work through? Because we have not given work through, you could be skirting the..."
Yeah, no, sure, yeah.
He wants to get the keys when you ask him, I think.
Yeah.
He did give us the dates, though, and it is from, sort of dates, we have built quite a few before that, and, 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 absolutely.
Two things here, one is that, um, Mr. Council Pearson's right, quicker than we can get that meeting done, the better. Secondly, um, why everyone's got this big thing about Stephen Saunders for, because he's not the one that says, "Yes," it goes to an inspector.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know for, for one reason how certain people get around certain things, but when it comes to the housing issues, Stapleford, we are dumping around, stick anything anywhere, and once we've got this neighbourhood plan passed, right, they're going to have a fight on that. Do you have any number? Give me a drop of champagne. And we've never had any official numbers, or never have had, and every time we seem to move forward with this neighbourhood plan, there's always Stephen Saunders, always trying to put a spoke out. Well, I'm sorry, Stephen Saunders can take a woman, John, we want to do it, and if it comes back from an inspector, if an inspector doesn't agree with it, fine, but listening to Stephen Saunders is a total waste of time, because he's old, he's, he's not worried about what you think or I think.
Can I just comment on that? Is that, is that... Um, on a question of procedure, when I say we'll go out for six weeks consultation, Brockstone are one of the consultees. So, they'll have an opportunity as a council, not as an officer, as a council, to make formal comments. Okay. But the second thing is, and this is a more informal comment, what this is really about is the site west of Coventry Lane, near the Cretor. So, what Stephen Saunders would have been told is that whatever you do, this is going in, and anyone that opposes it, you try and stop it. I've worked in Luton for twenty-five years, and you get told.
Oh, yeah.
And he's been told.
Oh, that's about not to worry, that to part of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, you're never going to get him to say, so long as you oppose the Coventry Lane site in that neighbourhood plan, he is never, ever, this side of the River Jordan, going to say, "This is great neighbourhood plan, I fully support everything you say." He won't do that.
No.
So, you, you, you have to bear that in, in, in mind. I mean, he's got a right to make comments, and, and I think you're right, that you need time to think about them, um, but I think, Council Pearson is, is right, we don't want it running much over two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it, it, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, I'd prefer not to have to come to the, the Reno meeting. So, um, all those in favour of a meeting then within the next two weeks?
So, then, two weeks, yeah, two.
We vote for Mark Booth.
Yeah.
So, then, the one...
Seven, eight.
Well, be it.
Anybody against us, buddy?
I'm in two.
And then, it's the absolute.
The last thing?
I'm waiting.
Jobs away, so.
Can I be excused? I don't see anybody much, I think, now, we've got to... We can, I can, all right, thank you. Have a good evening. Here's going to go, I'll say.
Okay, we're moving on to, um, all the questions. I think nothing was addressed in that town. Thank you, by the way, for members coming to us. The number five, Mayor's engagement, um, the most interesting one I've had in the past few weeks is about, I've done about twenty to thirty kilometres of cycling around the different gardens.
I didn't see in the Tour of France today.
Exactly, the hills, yes, because not, I couldn't get every, every western zone coming once, I decided, like, hill treat up. Stupid joy. Useful gardens, it's going to be really difficult, um, to, to, to judge on that. I've, I've got two gardens that live outside area to ensure fairness, to see what they think, but those, those, it was fascinating to see what people do in their gardens, I would, um, and last night was, was, it's very relevant to what we do tonight, in that we, we went to the parish, um, and, yes, and managed to bump and hold Stephen, but it was interesting to see what's being done in another, did we report on that now? Or should we do that again? Because it's a lot of laundry, we'll do that there, there's some interesting things that came up that you'll have to address, which we'll...
Once more to meet.
Another meeting. Uh, I want to do a future update, because it's now, I don't know what, but, um, and there's been notes on the second, item six, section one, three, seven, request, no one come? Uh, neighbourhood planning has been done since the seventh of July, three A, uh, eight, Luton's report.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll say a few words about it, mate. Um, everybody, um, has got a report on their Luton, the thinking project in, in Albany, and if you haven't seen it, or if you haven't been down there, you can go down there on a Wednesday morning or Saturday morning, if you want to visit, find out what they're doing. Um, we had a charity event, and you can see the leader of one, you know, walking good prizes again. Um, but it's very interesting, because if, if you haven't read the full report, you will notice that they give a lot of food away to those people that don't have much, and it all comes from near Luton, none of it sold, it's all given away. So, if you're really interested in, in Luton's, then please give them a visit down at Albany, and I'm sure they'll be glad to see you and everything.
Thanks very much. Very lovely. On, uh, item nine, then, meet your councillor, um, so, councillor Hall.
Okay, and, yeah, well, I said, my friend, I only put on Facebook because of Margaret leaving and, yeah, and it, it did get on the website, and obviously, busy, didn't have time to, to email everybody, and ask people, two people said, "Oh," so, it wasn't worth the hate, it wasn't a waste, actually. So, I'll probably arrange a date in, you know, like, June's time, something like that, and then I'll get it on the website, and we'll ask everybody if they'd like to come. So, we're not telling you early dates, but we'll see.
Mr. Mayor, uh, maybe, maybe it's a temporary school to go back.
Yeah. Good idea.
Uh, then, the next item will be traffic and highway legislation in Stapleford, and there's in fact, you see, what I'll do.
You'll have to say something, Richard.
Please.
I'll just go.
So, it's on, so, oh, sorry.
Actually, I was going to say, I'll forward the minutes round, I only managed to get them, sort of, out, I did today, but, um, I don't know where to really go, to really fix, I think, um, certainly some of the things, I've now got a list which we've managed to find us.
Certainly some of the things, I've now got a list which we've managed to find us, particularly there. So I'm going to try and circulate that to everyone, I see that they wish to come. And hopefully we can get more people there, because Margaret, Margaret didn't want to do this, did she? And you'll see from the minute I drop down, that she failed to reach, failed to produce any minutes for the last meeting, so that we do it as a sort of servant.
Like, I did, yeah, I did actually, Margaret asked me about that, and I did say to her, I said, can you please send them out? And make sure they get them.
I asked her, I asked her at least three times.
Yeah, I asked.
She never did.
Yeah, no, I did say to her, what shall I do with this, and send them out.
She never did. I don't believe it, she never did. And I asked her three or four times, and asked her to save them.
Yeah.
And she couldn't show me the problem. And so I don't think they ever told. That's all right. I think you can read it for yourselves, some of the things, I think Richard will agree, are ongoing things that have been there for some time. And we haven't seen together. I think one of the things, the two things that sort of came onto something, three things that came onto something. Firstly, it's the problems on foot following stuff. Why now they've actually put the ball out at the top there, then that means the time to turn it is even more critical. And the other, it was suggested by a resident, who I reached out to at the county meeting. It'd be far more sensible to put the other lights all the way on, rather than be messing about. Because the only place where there aren't the other lights is where it does, and people are obviously using it and driving the car there all day.
And catch the bus next.
And catch the bus. Lady who lives on Lower Water Street said she'd actually just watch some golfing, and then it came in the morning, and after that, and it disappeared after a while. Because the catch was. So I think that's something that might be worth following up. We gather that the St John's Hall of Netherland got crossing order. Now, whether that will change in September, I would suggest that perhaps we ought to consider writing to the county council in September. I'm saying, well, if they're not going to have a crossing, there ought to be a pedestrian crossing. Yeah, it's all right, I'm just reading my own notes. And the other thing you probably see on there, we thought the idea of this town, well, if anyone has been on St John's Street in particular, that's early out time, it's horrendous. So we're thinking that perhaps we could sponsor a thing at the source. Because parents do not listen to councillors, they don't listen to schools, but they do listen to the kids. We found out that whether I was. So it might be worth, as a sort of thing, to try and do that, we wouldn't have to give any sort of thing, just get, get involved with the school. And the other bit that was the possibility of doing, that's on the pollution levels. Which has come up to commit. There, there are really not things that we can act on now, but the things that perhaps could concern.
Yeah, I'm a reader, I think it's fantastic, and there was many there, but you know, to me, at least.
Quality, quality on control.
If anybody would like to come, please let me know, I'd quite hope you to contact all the councillors, you've all got the minutes now anyway. And when the next meeting is, so if anybody wants to come along, please turn up. Because part of the difficulty was, was finding who used to come, I've now got Darren, kind of his email from John Park. I will email Sarah Warren, I know she never comes, but we'll email her, you know, she likes. And we're trying to invite the police inspector as well, but I think he's going to the council, he's going to. So, but I will circulate these rounds, all those sort of people. Because it needs people to give it in, not just those, it needs people to give it in to make them an idea.
We've got the Hall.
Sorry, I didn't mean to do a long talk.
You promise not to.
I was just saying, it's great, but obviously Friday's, I love to go, but obviously that's a lot of work.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
So that's, that's the only thing, I know, I just never make a Friday unless I have to do it for days, or so, I don't think that's, you know, the case that could be changed.
I don't see, I don't see why not. I don't see, I don't see why not.
Yeah, to me, even if you like the one.
It was just because it was all, we'd done on a Friday, that we ended it that way, but no reason why we can't think of any other day.
You're going to see it for the people then, aren't we?
Yeah.
And there's, I said, the yellow lines, I was like, can we not, is he to?
Well, I think probably not, but you've noticed, right, which I brought up about every lorry steering through. Sunday for traffic lights, right, the actual sign says eight fifty-two through the centre of Stapleton. Now, unless we're all straight along Longwall Lane, you straight on for the eight fifty-two. Now, that. Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is, the R B agency that are directing them through, and eight fifty-two is a major trunkload, and bringing them through Stapleton just isn't working. So I've asked for a major, well, I'm waiting, obviously for the councillor to get that, councillor Jackson and all that, because I believe there needs to be a review of things. Including the yellow lines and everything else, because it, it's just not going nowhere. But that one in particular, I think is a fantastic idea, suggesting that car park on All's Road is made free, but that's the Brockstone matter, so we'll have to write to them. Because I'm sure that is a brilliant idea, we're going to come up with that one. Because that, Chris, my lord Chris, you can do something. But that, that is there, isn't it? That is a fantastic idea, fair play to him, he's come up with that. Get some frame, did you help?
I don't know, I think everyone's. One of the biggest things was that I'd have to keep the contacts, and I was trying to get a crossing near the school. Unfortunately, when the Aldi thing came back again, and they wanted to remove the condition, whatever it was, I, I said, can they pay for crossing our section one O six, and now we won't get asked. So sadly, if not two of that, and if it hadn't have been, we would have got across and paid for, which would have been pretty good. So I do think we need to contact the county, whether they say yes or no is another thing, but I think people have asked us to ask, and we're there to do what people ask us, you know, so I think we should ask the county council. And see what they say, and not have to say yes or no, we can try, can't we?
So councillor Hall. Just do a quick one, obviously, we asked Izzy last time to, not councillor, councillor, another producer, twenty-four hour, their answer is yes, basically, it's a no.
That's all right, I'm not going to get petitioned on.
Yes.
Because in, in our court strategy cloud that was voted in last Wednesday, right, and that was a question I brought to the county councillors as well, right? It says, on page twenty-nine, that we have a duty to protect communities with roads and. So I ain't got a problem, Paul, I, I expected that result, anyway, they're probably waiting for number three to kill, because then the Mark Dusson's.
I think that was the basic thing.
Yeah, well, don't worry, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned rocks in me when I was talking earlier. You need sack. Anyway, that. Councillor Pearson, Councillor Pearson, written in my cell, aware that these double. Give me some champagne. Give me the line you've been following, I understand what, where we want them. Trying to get the highways in county to agree with it, as Dave knows, is a, is a, but there's no harm in trying again. But obviously, as Councillor Pearson said, that in fact, that the, it's not going to road, St John's School is top priority. And yeah, we need some action from the county instantly, and we want to know about it. Because if there's going to be trouble, like there was the other week, before the end of term, it was absolute chaos. Now, the police know all about this area, and, and you've still got those double, what they call car transporters stuck in the middle of the road. Even when the children are throwing out, they're coming out of school and going in. So it's a, it's a thing that's been going on too long, and it's time that the county got their act together, and we've got to really tell them strongly. Because if not, they'll just go to leave.
Sorry, go on, mate, I've probably.
Well, I'd just like to ask, you know, St John's School, isn't crossing maybe? There should be, that's what we're discussing.
Yeah, there's no, there's a.
There isn't.
There's a vacancy, so we don't put it on the website, are we?
And you'd also apply. Go on, the man who can do first, I'll come.
No, I'm just saying, obviously, we are discussing, hang on. We are, we're going down the same thing, so we've already said, Dave's going to word it properly, aren't you? I'm sure he'll word what everybody's concerns are, and Izzy will, and Marissa will say them afterwards.
Yeah, you want me to do something about that first thing as well.
If you will, why, please, Marcy, if we're doing it, if we're going to, let's, what, if we only come up and say no, at least we're asking.
Yeah, maybe, I will, if you're.
So Dave will do that.
I, I would write something out to.
Obviously, you'll get some others on here, well, I, I suggest leader of the council, Amanda, that we write to John, John Longwood, councillor Longwood, councillor Jackson, that are all on that said committee. And walk through Stapleton at a time when they can see what's going on. I'd appreciate it if you all turned up, and then we could take them round, the bits and bobs that are being brought up all the time, simple things that we've been checking. Not simple things, sorry, I apologize, I'm saying simple things, things that we've been on about for years, right, and nothing's been done. So we write a formal invitation to the three people in particular, and they can walk around with yourself, Amanda, I might be delivering mail, or whoever, and let, let them see what we're all on about.
I'll, I'll put some, I'll put something together, bring across a log, let George have a little bit of it. And I don't mind doing that.
Mind you, answer first, yes.
Just three comments, I want to have a discussion. I have the town, I'm inspecting now once every month my highways, I had a one-to-one last Thursday, I've been highways. But I think all the neighbours looking to do is surface, that's a hold, obvious reasons, and all we're there to get to the north. I had to chase a book, I like the dates, I forgot. It's in the works, up in the October, and there's many locations to go on, but Izzy's office will be nervous about when the road vehicles come, so when that, when they come there, we'll put that in that.
Councillor Craig, I was wanting to thank the new town clerk, because I'm, I'm, I'm sure we're not usually getting reply backs quick, which means that when we're asking something to be done, it was only last month, it's actually been done. And we had to wait six, seven months, and then find out nothing's been done, so I just want, you know, we don't thank people, so that's not to say thank you, because it was only, what, six weeks ago, we had to do something, you've done it, we had a reply, so, you know. There you go, okay, that's your missy.
No, I just, well, one very quickly, go, one, one people link.
That probably go to our.
Well, yes, no, I was assuming that was about, we have the shop that isn't on. Oh, maybe.
Okay, but we're to, lots of questions, anything else on the, on traffic?
Well, it could be all night.
Well, we could, yeah, that was remote change.
Please come to the meeting, please.
This brings dinner, and this, in particular, and you can, Izzy can look through the minutes, it's always been one of the main problems in Stapleton. We have never moved, whether it's the two Johns, councillor Jackson, we have never moved, we've still been working the same arguments for nearly twelve years, Dave went back and went on that and all of us, well. It's time to came and had a look.
Okay.
Yeah. Item number eleven is G D P R updates. Maybe the explanation of what the G D P R is.
General data protection, they're killing our business.
I think Izzy contacts Post Road Avenue, she might go and get a video on this, and look at that sample, maybe.
I've got the guy coming out to talk to everybody.
I think we've got the video to get it to bring it in with them.
Okay, I will do.
And just remind people that Dave can deal with being in that.
Yeah, I will, I have got the date in the mail. Has it gone? August eighth, ten o'clock. The guys have announced talks are starting to G D P R, so anybody that can come, if you have any questions, I said it was general data state.
Yeah, I'll leave it there twice.
And I've sent a form around tonight.
Is it overtime?
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock. And I've sent a form around tonight, I think everyone's got one in front of them. And that's just like the team we have on the interim, to try and make sure we're compliant, so to fill that in, the terms we need, that's fantastic.
Fill that in tomorrow.
Right, and we're on it.
Item number twelve, Mosses and County Council, possibly to a village, Brockstone Borough Council.
Oh, is it there?
We'll come out and get that, yeah. I've said there's a discussion, who should we go with first, Councillor Pearson.
Yeah, I, I mean, I did agree with it being put on things, on this, something ridiculous. I've been warning people for the last ten years, this is like, been going.
Yeah, you have, David.
I certainly did it in the last election, I believe, but I've not been good, but it, I, it's, it's going to happen. Brockstone, as far as I'm concerned, is going to go. I was told years ago that it was done for twenty twenty-three. They are the only council that have not put in any objections to the county. Ashfield, Rushcliffe.
They all are.
Gaddering have all, all set in existence, but Brockstone hasn't. Now, the problem is, if you've been reading the sort of thing, that. We're either, as far as I see it, we're either going to end up under the county or the city. The city will just rape us for the money, bluntly. So.
The county won't be.
The county probably won't be, but yeah. However, one of the things that they haven't said is where we stand as a town and parish council. Now, if we own this building, they can't run everything from county hall. So in some ways, I can see that there may be a possibility that we may work better for the town, in fact, that we can have a little outreach, rather than whatever. The borough themselves, I'm sorry, they've shot themselves in the foot, they've had so many officers either unguardedly dismissed, disappeared with payoffs and whatever. They have shown themselves, as far as I'm concerned, totally not being competent of running the place. So I'm not too bothered about Brockstone. What, what happened with the other borough councils, I don't care, I think Brockstone themselves, they've shot themselves in the foot, which will either carry on. And away certain people have either been dismissed or fallen under the car, or whatever. Now, I don't know where we stand, so I would say in the first instance, I really couldn't care less about the borough council. They have not exactly proved us very helpful. I'm not putting against the borough councillors, but I'm sorry, as regards the administration of councillor Jack, and a lot of the officers, they have not been particularly forthcoming. You've already seen that Stephen Saunders couldn't be bothered to reply until this week. So either way, one way or the other, what I think in the first instance, that I would suggest that we do, is that we ask the town clerk to write to Kate Cuts. And ask her what she envisages as the future for the parish councillors. Because she hasn't said anything about the housing now. And I think that, so it may be, she's only talking about district councils and borough councils. So I think in the first instance, before we sort of jump on that too much, is that we ask Kate Cuts what her vision is for that. At the moment, as far as I see it, her vision is to save the incurred expenses that disappear at Brockstone and various other camps. I think Brockstone's been the worst example, but that's my personal opinion. I think it will happen.
Chair, in response to that, I can agree, now, I can agree with a lot of the things that you've said, and I, I would honestly say, I've been proud to serve this town, I've been happy with that, and hopefully it'll carry up. Hopefully it'll carry up, it's whatever. But, um, in, as what David said, every block we've always had is that when statehood wants something, no matter how much we shout, jump up and down, that it's always a stumbling block somewhere. You've got that letter, no 20 mile an hour speed limit. Thank you, but someone else will get killed, no 20 mile an hour speed limit. We, we want investment here, Alvin, for our main sample. We were all together, all of us, the whole town council, three and a half thousand signatures. We weren't bothered for 10 hours, 10 hours, that will still not be built in another two years. And, and that has stopped the regeneration of this town. And every time, county councillors, borough councillors, richer than all them, have never been bothered. Millen, and I'll say it because I'm Labour, had an actual plan for statefulness, right? The plan was to do this, to do that, more bungalows, as you've seen it, more pensioners, bungalows, help people, keep your communities together. And if we do go to the county, right, if we do, and this is badly, we'll see none of that. Because as David said, the city will take on it, and whatever we're wearing might be awesome, we might be Derbyshire. I don't know, we might be San Diego, ain't no clue. But once you lose democracy at this level, and it goes to a level that think, that think they're untouchable, and that's why I'm saying it, I'm sorry for a bit of statement, think they're untouchable, but it's got its own community and everything. And that's true, but I, I quite agree with David. They're selling the town all off, or there'll be a vote on it, we ain't got a chance of winning that, because there isn't enough of us, right? You want to sell the town all off and rent it in this town, you're like, and don't pull the wool off your eyes, this building would probably go as well. Well, well, I hope we do, David, but we do. But I'm, I'm not casting dispersions, don't believe what you're telling me, yeah? Because they will sell out, keep anything going, and that's my opinion. One piece of information I'll leave with, is he aware of just to let me know at this point?
Um, I have emailed Alvin for updating the search and days back, so I had no reply yet, so I will be chasing them off.
Thank you. The flower, by the way, sorry to call you, is he? By the way, I do, I do ring him every week, and it has still been the same situation. And that went down to perhaps, some cap, it's not their fault, were led by the Conservative Party to vote against Alvin. And I'm not bothered what anyone says, and I'll say that to the day I die, they were told what to do. In other words, there was wit. So this is where it's wrong, this is where councillors, as we're all, we're not wit. I voted, I abstained against Corstaxton, because I don't, and so did Chris, because, because it, it is unbelievable. Yeah, just a second, I shouldn't make too much, but make sure it, let's keep it positive, see what we can do. Oh, no, 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 I, I am, I, I, I have always been positive about this town. And the only thing that, every stumbling block comes from, you know, do you remember when Stan and Jackie, they put it for that, am I right, Amanda? We got that, whatever it was, and where did it go? The eastern town centre, and we asked Council Jackson, and he just says, well, it's good to do another project, that project can start it, yeah? Sorry about that.
I would say we do have to be positive, but, um, I, I totally agree that I think Brockford also. As, as far as the, if the county gets hold of us, they'll just, um, build, build, build from this side of Trowall up to Belborough, they'll, they'll just demolish. But what is more important than anything else, it's the residents of this town. They are not going to get a look in, no more than they're getting now, unfortunately, except for those that drive out. The problem is that if the county gets hold of, hold of here, um, and David's quite right, there's a possibility that things could get better for the town under a new structures thing, which has been talked about before. But we need to find out more information first before we start, before we start getting rid of that. So I would suggest, uh, and I agree with you, I would suggest, secondly, that we do get a talk with, um, Brockstone and, and the county.
Okay, we'll, we'll put some suggestions together that, I think, also.
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say, to speak, to speak first, because I made the question, James, we've got my, because there's some kind of thing, so I might repeat some stuff here that's already been said, but I do want it written, I think it's disgusting, there's only county councillor in the room, got up and walked out, when we're discussing something, because he actually voted to get rid of the borough council. The same, the same as John, and, and I get what Dave's on, and I appreciate him saying he doesn't mean the council, because that does mean a lot. We, we work our balls off, and I, I don't care about other areas, I'm not in other places, and the amount of stuff that, the good stuff I do see from the inside, it outweighs the negative, and, and, and I'm sure other poor councillors will agree with me on that one. And it's a really sad day if you do get rid of it. I, I see it as nothing more than a power grab by a certain party, and I'm not having a go at anybody there, because Chris and we may not react in a way that, you know. Well, it's, it's not about that, and if it is serious, I mean, it's all the health issues people are getting, it's parks and everything. Actually, I've got some air to read that, I'm passing one down, I want to get to that. Some of this is a little bit what was said, but it just says here, State, and you can agree on it, I'm sure, or I haven't said something. State for Town Council notes that there is likely to be a local government organisation in Nottinghamshire, and that Nottinghamshire County Council and Nottinghamshire City Council are in the process of developing proposals forward to developments of cases in local government. State for Town Council notes that there is no parish or town councils in Nottinghamshire area. State for Town Council notes that as a town council, which is an autonomous organisation, that is, democratically elected by the residents of Staffordshire. And State for Town Council believes that public services are best delivered at local level. State for Town Council believes that any attempt to reorganise local government in Nottinghamshire must have the support of the electorate. We're there to represent the people, and, you know, sometimes we do what we want, but not very often, we're supposed to be there to do what these guys ask us to do. We say that at election time, vote for me because I wear, and this is where we need to prove that we do. We don't need to go up and walk out of rooms, it's disgusting, and I'm glad you didn't threaten me.
We did get out.
I did, the cat we get in. Anyway, so State for Town Council will instruct, and I mean this in a nice way, the town clerk to write to the city council, county council, secretary of state, communities and local government to seek reassurance that the town council will be consulted on any proposals to reorganise local government in Nottinghamshire. The town council will instruct the town clerk to investigate the cost of holding a local referendum in Staffordshire on the nature of local government reorganisation in Nottinghamshire. And I would also like to request a record vote on this matter, but obviously, the person probably votes against, it's gone out in the room, but. That's, that's written, that, that's written down, and you want me to email that, she quit in a minute, it might be easier for you. But that's what I would have said at the beginning, but I think most of the people that have spoken already kind of said bits of that anyway, you know, like what Dave said, and John, and then you would say it again, and then. So that, that's my, I think it's disgusting, I, I'm proud, I'm proud to be a town councillor, I think it was brilliant, and I try. The borough council, you know, I was very lucky to get on there, I think I am. I loved it, you only, you only there for four years, you don't make emotions about it, and I, I've tried to do that, and, and I've worked with everybody, I think, there, different parties, and me and Chris, and bits and bobs, me and John, and I did work with someone else before they didn't want to talk to me. It is good fun, but at the end of the day, they're representing people, and this makes me feel sick, it really does, it's disgusting. And, and I think it's just nothing more than a power grab by a certain party, and I've never been this far on this table, I am not, it's wrong. I'll give you a minute, that might for a play.
To be honest, it's three lines.
Council, yes. Yeah, two things, really. Um, last, I think it may be a power grab, I think you'll find that the Labour Party and the Nottingham City will also be making a power grab, because they're all voters.
They're all, yeah, they're all.
So, I don't think we should just regard it as a power grab by any political party. On the other hand, if the city does it, if you get taken over by the city, they're only going to have 30,000 flats for students. Uh, there won't be any housing. Um, so I do think in that way, um, that it, it's political from both ends, both the Labour Party and the city. The city is struggling for money, it wants council tax, and that's why the city wants it. And most of you aren't old enough, I want to show that, but I can remember, I think, the 67, when there was actually a referendum, because the city was trying to take over Stafford, Easton, Abram, the referendum actually went out. I'm just trying to think who's old enough to remember. Ray should be old enough to remember, it's too darling for me to remember. Yeah, I think it was about 67, and we all overwhelmingly, and Chris is old enough.
We had a marathon at school.
And we overwhelmingly voted against. So, I, I think, um. As regards the two bits that we propose, I think, asking Nottingham City Council, the county council, and the secretary, yeah, fine, see what we get. Um, I do think we should still ask Kate Coots, and ask what she envisaged in the future, but I see no problem in his writing little, as regards that. Um, as regards investigating across the whole in the local referendum, I would suggest that if that was such a thing, there was the need for such a thing, then the county council would have to pay for it. That it would not be our, it would not be our responsibility.
But it's still an answer no, though, that's what I meant, you source up the information, it's integrated.
But I, I would suspect anything of that sort, the county council will have to give some sort of a referendum in that sort of thing.
That's correct, I was going to say that, David, because.
I don't need to worry too much about that for the moment, but I certainly don't see anything wrong with that, actually. By them to those.
Yeah, the other thing is, um, I don't think they'll get much response, but I think we have to, to work the chief executive of Brockstone, too, right, all going on. Maybe we might get something back.
We've already asked.
We've officially asked here, to get as much information as we can, and I think it's only right that we do so.
You, you've got to remember as well, Chair, sorry, sorry, Amanda, you. I didn't see you, and that's why I got my apologies, I'll give it to you.
I'll give it away.
So, obviously, Dave already proposed that we write to Kate Coots and think on board the suggestions that we, you know. So can we just, we're all in agreement here, so can we just, I say it again.
Go on, quick proposal.
We're all in agreement about that.
Propose a person that we write to Kate Coots, asking what our vision is. No, because we don't know what the vision is.
There'd be one exception, because he's not.
I want to say one more. Any guests, then, 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 uh. When, when it went to the vote, it was a week, it, it was quite, I'm saying, I'm saying that tomorrow, but you're not supposed to talk about that on the table. It was 30 to 35, that, that's quite close, and, and I think if enough people campaigned, and you look, like, like the alleged independents have got in Ashfield and that, let's see if they really are, you better go and get fined with them, because they are, they're the boss of paperwork and whatnot. You only need five or six people to change their mind, and, and I think with the elections coming up next year, we need to put pressure on these people, not just the ones that's local, but these others in other areas as well, you know, and, and hopefully all the people, you know, because I know, I might be wrong in this, as one of the borough councils has objected to it and stuff, and, and I'm going to contact them, because when you get six people to vote a difficult way, it's stale. And probably in the future, local market can do it again, but I'm not bothered about the future that far, I'm bothered about now. It worries me about people asking about something, it really does.
We've, we've got something positive we can do now, so.
Those things, I'd be very, firstly, I would like to propose, the first thing, what Richard's upset on there, but uh, in response to it, I think we should be very careful about getting involved, particularly as it's getting towards the election, being involved with the politics of all the councils. And the councils, I don't, as a town councillor, fine, if there are individuals which to do that from your own, within your own parties, fine, but I don't think as a council, we should really be about.
As a council, contact all the people, you do individual, because you might have people.
Sorry, that wasn't clear, that's all, but, yeah, fine, if individuals, you're all in particular parties or voting, then fine, do it by your parties, it should come from the council. Uh, but I would like, I think the first item on here that we wrote to, our past is over with. Uh, it says, I'll read out what Richard said, just in case people have been hearing. David Town Council will instruct the town clerk to write to Nottingham City Council, Nottingham County Council, the secretary of state for communities and local government, to seek reassurance that State Town Council will be consulted on any proposals to reorganise local government in Nottinghamshire. Which I think no problem, I think that's fine, and, you know, we might get some things out.
Just looking to it, did any object? Any balls to say before?
I'll, I'll, can I say? You still have one as well?
Yeah, we already said we would.
Okay. Somebody wants to tell Johnny.
Um, Mark was waiting for John to come in, and I know it's not only John, but it's all, and I, I just want to say thank you to Rizie, because she's been, had a major upheaval with Mark going, and, um, it's caused a number of problems. Um, but she's doing a fantastic job. So, I'd just like to say personally, thank you, I'm sure everybody can do what she has to do.
I would second that, because I know, and watch, that, uh, and she's very polite, she's very forward looking, so that's good. And I think she did a brilliant job.
One of those, we, because obviously at the end of the evening, we'd like to all get away, including Zee and staff. Um, obviously drinks will be available when we all come in.
Oh.
I think, no, you mightn't. And after about, I think 40 minutes, 45 minutes into the meetings, um, we're going to just basically say, you know, bear or clear off, or one, one, that's a clear off, because obviously we'd all like to get down early and have the staff, so. I'm glad that's into the house, bro. Now, okay, so, drinks finished, yeah, thank you.
We'll get paid, you will get all that, busy house and that guy.
Right, thank you.
Right, so the next item is, uh, correspondence. Uh, running applications.
Yeah, the ones we proceed forward, obviously, concerns.
The earliest name that we've watched, Darren Tandy, okay. Uh, that's what we've made. Um, I suspect him, I think, it would be within the HS2G, so it would not be, so we're giving the HS2G. And I suspect that's why the particular application, if you couldn't fill up that, that's not, it would be within that, uh, that they will, they'll not be coming anymore.
All I wanted to say on planning, just, I, I forget, but we're not talking about specific things, I think, I'm all right. There was changes that were revised, national planning policy framework, I'm not dead glutton here, it's my duty, I can't participate with the rest of the name. And it's, it's been revised, that's on the 24th of July, and it, it has different effects to building in the green building and whatnot. So I won't read it all out, but it's here, but if, if you want me to pass around the table or what, or if, if it's okay that the town clerk will see it again next, it, it just said paragraph, paragraph 145, blah, 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 but it's important information that you should all know, because if something comes back here in the future, and I'm sure it will do, and, and it's in an area of storage, it's, it's nice to know that it's, it, it might change the way that you see things, you get what I mean? So I would suggest. I've only got it on me, so you can have a copy.
Payment, Chair.
Obviously, like I said, when we came in, I put the papers off here, apologies for that one, and Dave did her birthday, I don't want to see you walking in the door. And so, again.